Ready to go, John.
Sorry, meeting's gonna go an extra half hour now.
I hope you all can see that now. But this here is just showing where revenues are coming in. Yield tax, which is tempers, excavation tax, interest, motor vehicle permits. But the bottom line is we're somewhere around $2 million mark with revenue that comes in, whether it's from the state or whether it's fees or interest. One of the things this past year, we did receive from the state additional $75,000, which was unexpected. In 2020, we'll be receiving a similar revenue from the state. This is a new income that we have received with a new fiscal budget for the state. Now, just quickly going through what we had on there for line items and explaining some of the earlier questions that were raised, where the costs were changed within the torn of budgets. And the town office budget is the reflection with the operation of town office, primarily as we explained earlier with salary now where the rates increase to be competitive with the current marketplace. The moderator was a very slight increase in the stipend. The town court tax collector actually had a slight decrease, mainly due to postage fees and some other minor adjustments. And elections this year, the budget goes up because in 2020, there will be more elections than what we had in 2019.
Trustee of trust funds is a level funded budget. Professional auditors, we have done every year. The increase here was due to contract increases in the 2020 proposal. Assessors, we have an increase in assessors due to new computer software, which will allow residents to access property tax information online. Treasurer is an increase due to wage and stipend adjustments. Legal, this budget has increased significantly. This is based upon ongoing litigation we are going through with for utility assessments. That is shared between many towns though throughout the state. We also have continuing litigation for Smithville Cemetery, as well as any other unanticipated legal issues that come up throughout the year based on restored information. Planning board, we have minor adjustment increases for anticipated education and training. We have several, we have possibility of several new planning board members coming on. We want to make sure that they have the correct education. Zoning board is a level funded budget. Conservation committee is a very slight decrease in their budget. I believe it's on periodicals. And heritage commission is also a level funded budget.
The general government buildings, we had an increase for protective measures we need to take for tax-deeded property. There were several properties that the town had to tax deed. The cemeteries have had an increase for cemetery maintenance, monument repairs and tree removal. Insurance for our property liability decreased slightly, along with the workers' compensation. And the unemployment insurance was level funded. The regional association, these are dues that we paid to regional associations to help the town. The two main ones that we utilized the services, the New Hampshire Municipal Association and Southwest Regional Planning. New Hampshire Municipal Association has been a great asset for us in which they give us legal advice, they have attorneys on staff, and there is no cost other than our annual membership. The police budget increase reflects, for those of you that may not be aware, we have now filled the full-time police officer's position. And in last year's budget, because of the timing of when we anticipated them to be hired, we have a budget therefore. There was three quarters of the year in this year's budget over the full year. The animal control budget is at that level funded. Fire department had a slight decrease in the budget, mainly in reductions in training, equipment replacement and vehicle maintenance.
Building and code enforcement, there is an increase in the budget due to a stipend increase, as well as anticipated software purchases to expedite and track permitting processes. Emergency management, there's a decrease in this budget due to the elimination of the deputy emergency management director. Communications, reduction in this budget due to the cancellation of code red alert system. We are now getting this through the state, it's a state-funded program. DPW, we have a slight decrease in health insurances due to changes that employees have made in their plans. Outside lighting currently is an increase based on the actual cost in 2019, but I did want to make a point on this. We are looking to change lighting over to LED, so hopefully we will actually see a decrease in this line item in coming years. Transfer station, there's a reduction in this budget due to the decrease in the amount of trash volume that we're processing, as well as utilizing funds in 2019 to purchase trash bags that will be used by townspeople in 2020. Landfill testing, there's an increase in this due to a state mandated testing for PFAS contaminants. The health office is an increase due to a stipend adjustment. Welfare is also a stipend adjustment. Parks and rec is a very minor increase. There is a stipend adjustment, but there was a reduction in equipment purchases.
The pool budget, we've got an increase for pool chemicals and repairs of pool deck coping and equipment repairs. In previous years when we've had any funds left, we've tried to pre-purchase the chemicals. In this year's budget, we weren't able to do that, so there's a slight increase there. Patriotic purposes, as we started the meeting off, this has been put into the budget and it's a decrease over the previous year. Last year, we had purchased flags that go on the center of town and also flag poles that were purchased for the cemeteries. The principles and bonds, this was the item we also had at the beginning of the meeting. It's for the landfill closure bond, and that should be paid off in 2024. And this one, the interest in bonds is the interest on that. This slide here is to show where the town of New Ipswich is relative to our surrounding town for the tax rate. And as you can see here, we are one of the low, if not the lowest, tax rate. So we think that the budget process that we've been doing with the department managers, the town administrator, the finance advisory committee is faring well for the residents of New Ipswich.
Okay, Article 3. Road progress block grant, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $150,000 for maintenance, construction and reconstruction of New Ipswich roads, to be offset by the New Hampshire Department of Transportation block grant. No amount to be raised by tax, through taxation.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to just speak on this real brief. I always get asked the question, why do the selectmen have three road warrant articles? This is not part of our road building warrant article. This is money that the state pays us based on how many miles of road we need to maintain. This money here primarily goes for road salt, culverts, work that has to be used to maintain our existing roads. The next two, I think it's the next two warrant articles are what the money is asked for to improve our roads.
Also to clarify this, the reason that we have to vote on this is we have to vote it so that we can use it. Otherwise, the state gives it to us and we're not able to use the funds. They would just sit there.
Any further discussion on this article? All right, Article 4. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $350,000 to construct and pave for New Ipswich roads. This will be a non-lapsing appropriation for a period of five years, terminating on December 31st, 2024, or when the project is completed, whichever comes sooner, in accordance with RSA 32, Section 7, Subsection 6. Any discussion on this article?
I'd like to make a motion that the board of selectmen is allowed to vote on this on all of the articles that have monetary value. I was absent at the meeting that the votes were taken, and I think for the public interest for them to know how the full board is voting.
So you're talking about the extra language it says the selectmen vote so-and-so in favor and against?
Where it says recommended by the board of selectmen.
So the recommendation, but I don't have it on the warrant copy that I got. I'm sorry.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir. Roger, do you want to come to the microphone, please?
Where is it?
It's up here on the stool in front. While Roger's coming up, perhaps you can speak real quickly?
My name is Dee Gay, and I'd like to make an amendment to add to the current article language following the last period of the article, that these funds will be prioritized for spending based on objective data prepared by the Director of Public Works or highways and road committee recommendations. The road committee shall be comprised of two members of the planning board, the DPW director, and two townspeople at large members, with understanding of road maintenance and paving. I have that written for you. I don't want to make this motion, but I've been asking for several years about what the plan is for the roads. The last stated plan, I believe, was in the 2016 or 2017 town report. And we have not, I've asked for several years who the road committee is and have not been provided with information. Our master plan says we will have a road committee, and we don't currently have one, and that's why I'm proposing this.
Do you have a second for that?
Two seconds. Was it a second on the clock?
When you read this, I think you said December 31st, 2024, is that what we said?
I'm sorry, can you speak into the microphone, hold it?
I think you said 2024, should we amend it to 2024? Or is 2025 still in the five years?
Right. So that's, so 2024 would be 0, 1, 2, 3, 4, that's five years.
That says 2025, December 31st, that would be five years?
Is it 2020 the first year?
Yes.
2, 1, 21, 22, 23, 24?
But this is December 31st, 2025.
I'm sorry.
So that's six years, right?
Oh. Your copy of the warrant says 2025?
Yes.
Your presentation still doesn't slide.
I don't think it's going to make any difference because I don't, you know, usually the money doesn't last that long, but just to have it right.
Well, I'm sorry. All right, so we'll have to fix that after we take care of this amendment.
Okay.
So I'm going to read the amendment, which starts at the, I guess, at the end of the article, saying, "These funds will be prioritized for spending based on objective data prepared by the Director of Public Works/Highways and Road Committee Recommendations. The road committee shall be comprised of two members of the planning board, the DPW director, and two townspeople at large members, with understanding of road maintenance and..." Is it paving? Is that the final word? All right, I have motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this article? Come to the microphone, please.
I have two points I'd like to make. And in saying them, I'm not necessarily guessing or anything. But nowhere in the warrant, and I'm asking you to make a ruling, nowhere in the warrant does it talk about we're going to create a road committee. And it would seem to me that this might not be proper because the public hasn't been warned we're going to create a road committee. That's number one. Number two, what you just read sounds like we have a road committee for just this article. This will create another road committee for the next article.
Can I respond?
So, Mr. Coffey, on your first point, I'll rule this a legitimate thing. We're raising and appropriating $350,000 to spend on roads, and now we're just putting a little oversight on it. So I don't think it changes the intent of the article.
The second?
Well, there's a response from the amender.
The second was what I got. I'm not favored for it, but I have the wrong.
I'm sorry, I'd like to have the discussion on the microphone.
I just want to know what the second part of the question is.
Second part of the question is, are we going to do this on the next article?
Okay. My goal...
It will be a separate debate.
Oh, good point. So my goal here would be again that we only do this for this year, and I think that this would be a wake-up call that we need to get the road committee back established. We do have in our master plan, and I went back to the minutes, and since the last road committee meeting, there has been no dissolution of that committee. That committee already exists in the town, it just doesn't have members. Or at least, there haven't been any published in the last two towns before this. I would be glad if the last committee would come back and we could just ignore this, but we don't have an active committee, and we need an active committee. And I'll sit and chew on what we do for the, for the, for the next point, Jim.
Two responses. One, it is in the town report under the selectment for the roads. And secondly, I've been on the select board for three years. You've never come to us in a meeting and asked what our plan was for the roads.
And I do want to mention one thing, is that the statement, the way I'm receiving it, is as if though there is no planning forethought in how the roads sequencing is going to happen. If you look at the data that we have, we do have this all plotted out on every road, what the length of the road is, what the condition of the road is. And it is, the judgment has been primarily on getting to what is referred to as the collector roads, roads that get you from point A to point B. In other words, not a side street, to get those who are the priority. And that has been the priority. If you look at the major routes through town, if you take Temple Road, Greenville Road, Lower Ashby, Ashby Road, those who are collector roads, River Road, Page Hill, they go through and get you out of town. The side streets, we have, I shouldn't say we haven't done any because there are some of that in the opinion of the DPW director. While the paving crew is there, it would be more cost-effective to do those. But that has been the plan, and in this year's plan, as you'll see in the town report, the other through roads we're looking at trying to do, one is making Collins Road a through road so that that would come out to Smith Village Road. The Hubbard Park Road out to Pine Street. Continue with the overlay because right now there is only a binding course down on Lower Ashby, say from Ashburn Camp Road out to the state line. So there is a thought process, the selectmen do discuss it and try and prioritize.
I am sorry if I inferred that it was haphazard, that wasn't my intent, but up until, again, 2016, there were things that were published by the committee that designated by our master plan to do this, and it doesn't and shouldn't be done by the selectmen. If there's a committee, then that's their responsibility. When I first moved to town, these warrants had road committee approvals the same as the select board approval. It is a designated task, it's meant to be done by a group outside the select board. I'm not, I'm not saying that it's not being done decently or well. I'm saying that that's not how our town was set up to do this, and that we, we should be trying to work. And you guys have got more than enough to do. It's not supposed to be the selectmen's purview necessarily to make those decisions. So, you know, we had all of the roads that you discussed, Old River Road was on the last road committee work plan. Those plans were published in three-year to five-year increments. We are now at the end of those, and we have not done this. When I say I haven't discussed it with you as individual select members at a select board meeting, that's true, but I've talked individually with two, with three of you and not, not received an answer that... And again, this isn't my first time doing this. This has been at at least three public hearings where I've kind of commented, where it's road committee suddenly disappearing. And every year, it got more and more disappearing.
I can tell you, since I've been here on this board, there hasn't been a road committee. And I, I don't think that the select board has made ill decisions on which roads get done. Many people tell me, you know, we're really seeing the bank for our buck. We can get through town now without hitting potholes, going down, you know, through the areas where before you, we're always trying to take a detour. How many people, when High Bridge Road was being done, the detour was down Temple Greenville Road? It was terrible condition. Now you can go either one of those routes, and the roads are in good condition. And I, and I'm hoping that I'm not just hearing from a few people with the conditions of our own. And to say that there isn't a plan, we do have a plan. There is a, and I wouldn't say a plan set that, well, XYZ Road is going to be done in 2021 because we assess it each year. As with anything, you have to be able to look at it and say, well, what should we be looking at in the near future? The ultimate goal is that we get all of the roads paved.
All right, Mr. Moderator. I'm going to say I very much favor our road program. We've spent a lot of money, we should be continuing to spend money to continue maintaining our roads. However, having sat on the board of selectmen for a year, having not missed a single meeting, having sat through the road selection process, it was a questionable process. It was not transparent, I have not seen a road plan presented formally in any sense, anything written, any sort of written document, nor was there any input from our highway superintendent, our road agent, on which roads you thought were appropriate to pave or not pave, nor was there discussion of the condition of the roads other than, oh, we need to finish off the finish course, or we need to do this on this road, or this is the next road in some sort of sequence that I have not seen. So while I fully support the articles for roadways, I also believe that there should be some additional scrutiny on how the roads are selected, and they should not necessarily be selected by the selectmen.
So I think I would just like to speak in support of the woman who brought this amendment for this article change with road committee. She's correct, you haven't, we haven't properly dissolved the road committee. So that being the case, the selectmen haven't, she's right. We used to get before our annual meeting, along with these articles, we'd get something in the mail usually, or even something just in the newspaper, you know, speaking to what the plan was for the coming year for road service and all that stuff. And since the committee hasn't dissolved, the selectmen's job really is to try and form, you know, more interest in a new committee and not take over the committee's role for them. So she's correct, the procedure is a procedural thing. You want to dissolve, you have to bring the people, since we voted in. The master plan and the road committee, it either needs to be dissolved or you need to reactivate it and get some interest moving in it and give us a little, be a little more proactive and give us a little supportive information so that we can all be prepared to come here tonight and support this and not have to discuss what the road plan is.
Any further discussion on this amendment? All right, I'll vote for question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no.
No.
I think that is a vote be affirmative. The article is amended. Any further discussion on the amended article, Article 4? Article 5. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $250,000 to reconstruct and pave roads in New Ipswich. This will, oops. Actually, I'm going to override myself and back up to Article 4. Do we need to correct anything that says 2025 on that article? Well, sort of the words don't match up, do they? Period of five years would be 2024. All right, we'll let it go to the DRA and see what they say. Article 5, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $250,000 to reconstruct and pave New Ipswich roads. This will be a non-lapsing appropriation for a period of five years, terminating on December 31st, 2025, or when the project is complete, whichever comes first, according to RSA 32, Section 7, Subsection 6. Yes?
Dee Bailey, again, I would like to make the same motion that I made on Article 4, but I would like to add a proviso that I think will keep us out of trouble. And the proviso that I'll hand you as soon as I sit on the writing if this works is, should both Article 4 and 5 pass, a single committee shall serve the intent of both articles.
of both articles. So if only one passes, it's in each article, but if both pass, this proviso would get us out of trouble.
What if five, what if four passes, or not five, will proviso?
It would still only be one then, it would still only be one. It only works if both pass. It's only needed if both passes.
So what if four fails and five passes?
Then it will be a proviso that doesn't matter, so it's a proviso that goes away. I hate provisos, but sometimes they're necessary. It's kind of like a parenthesis that goes on and then...
All right.
I don't have a read on that, I can read you, please. I'll sit right here. You want the open word, you'll now write it for me. I already got one.
I don't get what she's trying to do. She's trying to reinstate the...
So again, this reads, should both article four and five pass, a single committee shall serve this intent on both articles, of both articles. Is there a second? There's that name, please? Is there a discussion on this article?
On the amended article, the article itself, or just in general?
On the amended article, the amendment, the amendment itself, yes.
Okay, I'm all set to the amendment, I don't need to discuss that, but I would like to discuss the article after it's amended.
Okay. Any further discussion on the amendment that's been proposed? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no.
No.
That's a vote, the affirmative. Is there a discussion on the, article is now amended. Jay.
Jay Hopkins, that was the vote. If this article does happen to pass, I'd be happy to serve on every road committee. On either one of these articles, I guess I'd like to ask the, the select board, the fund balance at this point is how much?
1.2.
I thought I was told that the budget hearing was 2.1.
Disletzian, my apologies, is that actually 1.5, or do you think the 1.2 is what it is with collected funds? Because...
I transpose my numbers on my piece of paper when I was speaking to you that evening. It's 1.2, the number we got from the state was 1.5, but we think that 1.5 includes uncollected funds being taxes that are owed to town, so we feel that if the number is 1.2, that is liquid asset.
There goes all my ammo, John.
That's okay. Well, Jay, unfortunately, we couldn't do anything with it anyway.
But you could, if, if there was 2.1 there, we could decide to spend some of that money tonight, that's why I ring up your phone.
All right, any further discussion on the amended article five? All right.
Do you second that amendment?
All right, we move to article six, to fund capital reserves and expendable trusts, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $215,500 to be contributed to the previously established capital reserve and expendable trust funds as follows. I'm sorry, I must have given the wrong numbers. Or I copied something wrong, so I'm going to hear it here. 243-500. All right, so maybe I should read from the slide then.
The numbers in the slide, I'll bet.
Highway capital pool, expendable trust, $75,000, fire truck capital reserve, $50,000, pool expendable trust, $6,000, maintenance of parks and recreations facilities, capital reserve fund, $2,500, police cruiser expendable trust, $40,000, revaluation capital reserve, $15,000, building maintenance expendable trust, $35,000, fire department protection equipment expendable trust, $20,000, recommended by Board of Selectmen, at least two to zero. Is there any discussion on this article? Brian.
Yes, I have trouble with this article in two ways. One is, it has gone up almost 50% in five years.
Do you have to hold the microphone a little squared?
Yeah, it's gone up almost 50% in five years, and then on top of that, it's been so poorly mismanaged, I believe, because article nine has a huge amount, a quarter of a million dollars for some breathing apparatus, which I thought that...
That's a petition article that has nothing to do with the select board. That's a petition article.
John, John, let me finish.
But I thought, this is, I think this is poor management somewhere, because I thought this capital reserve is supposed to eliminate those kind of problems, spite, big spikes like that. So either way, well, we have $70,000 for the fire department, between the fire truck and protective equipment, so why is it that they have those two items, and then they have this article for a quarter of a million dollars just all of a sudden come up, and yet I don't want to raise capital reserve, it's already going crazy. So why, why wasn't it, be adjusted for the fire truck, lower that, and, and put in for the protective equipment also breathing apparatuses? I mean, it seems like breathing apparatus are more important than boots and pants, and certainly fire trucks.
I answered your question. It's a, that is a petition warrant.
All right, well then the fire department is mismanaging here, why are we allowing that?
Well, just speak to the chief, she's right behind you.
On that note...
Please take your...
My name is Meredith London, I'm the fire chief, I live on Willard Road, still. I'd like to speak to the, to the expendable trust for the fire department protective equipment, and, and this kind of goes with number nine, which I'll bring back later. In 2005, we purchased our original air packs, and they're good for 15 years. At that point, there was no fire department protective equipment, capital reserve, or expendable trust. Three years ago, when I became fire chief, I realized that we were going to be up against this as we got further in, and that there was not going to be any more money to replace the air packs. So at that point, I requested an increase, at that point, we were putting $8,000 into the fire protective equipment expendable trust, and what I did was ask for a raise up to $20,000, so that we could start to build up for the next time we have to replace air packs, because air packs are only good for 15 years, and then after that, they have to be taken out of service because of the bottles and because of the air packs. So to not end up in this position again in 15 years, I asked for an increase to the capital reserve, I'm sorry, expendable trust, to $20,000. Air packs at this point are just under $9,000 apiece, and this is going into my article nine, but we have 23 seats on our trucks, and we have 25 members, and in order to meet that requirement for the seats on the truck and the members to be able to all wear protective air packs, we have to increase that capital reserve expendable trust to $20,000, and we need to do something in the interim until we build up that capital reserve expendable trust again. Thank you.
This next slide here just shows what we have in the current capital reserve account.
Read my mind.
Any further discussion on article six?
Yes.
Jay.
It's totals 245 roughly, is that, that's the article dollar value?
243-500, I believe.
Have the Board of Selectmen considered taking that out of the fund balance? Because we do have 1.2 million in the fund balance, and the DRA recommends 15% of your operating budget, which would be somewhere around $375,000, so even if you were to reduce the fund balance by 245,000, you're still going to have in excess of $900,000 of our collectively, our money. I'm just wondering if you would consider doing that? If not, if I would have support for a motion?
Jay, yes, I think you're aware the Board of Selectmen's position on that use of the fund balance was going to be on a warrant article for the new police station. Unfortunately, we missed it by a day on the posting, so we were not able to put forth the warrant article for new police station, which was based on using some of the funds out of the fund balance. So I would not be in favor of taking money out of the fund balance to put into a capital reserve account, where the intent, I believe, is to continue pursuing next year with a warrant article and still using fund balance.
Someone second my proposals? If so, I'll write one up, if not, so be it.
I'm sorry, what, Jay?
I would, I would propose taking the dollar values for this warrant article, out of fund balance, to pay for this, instead of out, directly out of my pocket, I've already paid this money in, and I think we need to be using it. Right, the whole, the whole 245,000 would be mine.
Put it back on one slide there.
I got a, I got a second one right there.
Does someone have the amendment sheets? My amendment, I'm going to walk you. I have to wait for him. So is there any discussion on the amendment that Jay is writing up, which would take the funds out of the fund balance to fund the capital reserve this year? Mr. Coffee?
I just want to point out that the ideal fund balance, which I think Jay mentioned, which is five to 15% of my recollected value, is for the entire town budget, not what we think of as a town budget, but the town pays the school, it pays the county, and it pays the state. So I think taking nearly a quarter of a million dollars out of 1.2 million is not a very smart thing, and has nothing to do with the police station. And lastly, I am sure the selectmen know the exact ordinary fund balance from 12/31.
Yes.
To, to sit here and do a one-off for 245,000 approximately, out of the, out of the budget, we're not going to do this every year, it would make more sense to put the money away, I realize the significance of that money sitting there is annoying, but there is a long-term plan for that money, plus, as a part of the budget, 245,000, while it's 10%, it's a minimal for long-term, long-term gain. We're investing in the long-term prosperity of the community.
Yes, I just want to let it know that last year, the selectmen didn't give us any money for the fund balance to offset taxes. I feel that this would make up a little bit for that, and I, I don't think that our, our money should be used to manipulate us on another broad future project.
Sorry, can you repeat that at the end there? I'm sorry, I didn't hear it all the way.
The whole thing?
Yeah, no, just the ending part.
I didn't, I, I don't feel that, that they should take our money and, and manipulate us to do another future project in that, something in the future, that's our money that should be used to offset taxes, not something to play games with, some project that we're...
Okay. To respond, you saw it earlier, the town's portion of the tax rate is $3 and some change for $1,000. When you see your tax bill come in, it pays the town, the state, the county, and the school. So all we're doing by putting that money and offsetting the taxes, we're lowering the $3.87 to offset a school budget, we're not doing anything to help. And then the following year, when your taxes shoot back up, and you're going to stand there in front of us and complain that your tax is doubled, what are you going to do then? That's what happened a few years ago when the school offset it. We explained this to you two weeks ago in the town offices.
And, and I disagree with you. I disagree with that.
Because you, you don't understand how the math works evidently.
I understand that when we have our money in an account, it should be used for our taxes, not money in the account to save till we can buy a police station in the future. And what is it, the, the school, power portion is bigger, but what does that got to do with the fact that we want our money used to offset our taxes, period? I, I, it's the first year I think I remember that excuse being used, out of all these years.
You're incorrect. Brian, one thing I want to make clear, you stand there and you here pay about your money, our money. Just remember, we're residents here too, we pay taxes, we're trying to look out for the best interests of the town.
Brian, I'd also like to comment that, I, as a citizen, I also want to be able to have the money expended where I think it's most important, and I think it's clear that you and I would disagree, that saving this money in the town budget or the town's fund for the police station is to me, an important component of the future of this town. So I can't agree with your position at all. I, I really think the police station is an important project, and I think those funds should be used there.
All right, well, okay, I would expect you to disagree with me, of course, but the fact is, when it's, when the money's in the account there, the fund balance, which Jay has been talking about more than once here, and he's been a selectman, I think that says something too. There's an ex-selectman that's talking the same way I am, basically, so I think that outweighs what you said.
I'm just trying to express a, a different view, okay? I don't agree with you, and I think my, my money, our money, should be used for the police station, and I think that's an appropriate direction to go.
Okay, I think we've slipped away from the... Are there any further discussion on the amendment, which I'll read here? To see if the town will take the money from the fund balance, the sum of which is $243,500 to be contributed to the previously established capital reserve and expendable trust funds as listed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no.
No.
I'll take that as a vote, as a negative. Any further discussion on article six? No further discussion on Article six, Article seven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty thousand dollars to support the new Whipswich Library. Is there any discussion on this article? I'm sorry, I thought someone was making a motion towards the microphone. No. Well, well, I mean, bless you one for the minutes. So, uh, Jay, I need to keep your amendment. Can I give you another, can you get another fresh copy from the back of the room?
I have some numbers on this one, hold it. They're not working in my favor anyway, too.
Any further discussion on the library article? Nothing was added. All right. Article eight, ambulance service, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eighty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars for contracted licensed... I'm sorry, I'm off of all my others. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of ninety-eight thousand and sixty-five dollars for contracted licensed ambulance service, emergency services and support. Is there any discussion on this article? All right.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator, I thought the Selectmen were gonna vote on all the appropriations.
Uh, here at this meeting?
Yes. What else?
Um, I think they would do that in a Selectmen's meeting that's posted after the, uh...
We can't, we have to do it at this...
We have to do it at a posted meeting.
This is the posted.
Mr. Moderator, we have to do it at this hearing, we can't make any changes after the hearing. This is the only place where you can make any change.
All right, um, so Selectmen, would you like to vote on Article eight?
Can we go back to Article seven?
Six is an appropriate.
On Article four, I'd like that to be three to zero.
Article four is amended?
Yes.
So, Selectmen vote three to zero on Article four. Does the advisory committee?
Three to five.
And on five?
Yeah, on five.
Do we need to have the advisory committee say anything?
I'm sorry, I'd like to make a motion that the Finance Committee also vote on the amendments, as they've always done in the past, whether the advisory had gone.
It's not a motion that you didn't vote for. I don't, I don't remember the times when we did have an, when we had an advisory committee, so I don't...
It, it did used to be on there.
All right, so...
We'd like to vote on it.
All right, and your vote is?
On which?
Article four.
Three to five. Three to zero.
You go favor that, Jeff? All right, so three to zero. So we're doing some housekeeping here that, uh, was not done previously. Because it does, it does get printed on the warrant.
The recommendations would be on the ballot. Some people like to see them.
All right, Article... However, these articles have been amended... These articles have been amended since that meeting, so they have to vote fresh again. Article five. Selectmen vote three to zero. Budget Committee, three to zero. All right. Article six. Three to zero, Selectmen? Three to zero, Advisory Committee? Article seven. Three to zero for Selectmen?
Two to one. Two to one.
Two to one for Budget Committee? Ambulance service, Article eight. Three to zero for Selectmen? Three to zero for Budget Committee? Okay.
Budget Committee is an advisory committee, I think it is.
They had been on in past years when we had a Finance Advisory Committee. Not as a Budget Committee, Finance Advisor, they were also on there.
The RSA is allowed either a formal Budget Committee or an Advisory, Advisory Committee to make regulations.
Okay, we caught up. Article nine. And this is, this is a petition article? To see, so by petition, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a sum not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus, packed bottles and masks to replace non-compliant equipment. Any grant monies if awarded will be applied to offset the expenditure.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make one clarification, that was not a petition warrant article.
All right, that is not a petition warrant article. Thank you. Is there some discussion on this article? Meredith?
Meredith Lund, Fire Chief, that was gonna be my first question. Since this was put in, uh, we have done a lot of research and I've done some, um, talking and getting some bids on the actual equipment we're looking to replace. So I'd like to amend this article, and all I want to change is the amount. It's gonna be one hundred and ninety-nine thousand nine hundred dollars, as opposed to two hundred and fifty thousand, and it'll still get us the twenty-three packs that we need. And it is signed by myself and Michael King.
Is there any discussion on the amendment? All right, so if I heard it correctly, Meredith, you said one ninety-five nine hundred?
One ninety-nine.
One ninety-nine? One nine-nine ninety? I rounded up at that point, but okay. All right. I'll read the amended article. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred and ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars for the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus to replace non-compliant equipment, grant monies will be applied, uh, if awarded, to the off, to offset this expenditure. Is there any discussion? All right?
I'd like to get clarification on that number, I thought you said one hundred and ninety-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. Okay, Moderator just indicated one hundred and ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars.
You are correct, so we will amend that to be one hundred and ninety-nine thousand nine zero zero. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no? As a vote, the affirmative? Any vote, any discussion on the article as amended?
I'm gonna try and make this so I don't repeat myself too many times, but in two thousand and five, we purchased twenty air packs, which at that point is what we needed. Um, at that point, they met the two thousand and two National Fire Protection Association standard. We currently have twenty-three riding positions, which I mentioned before, and twenty-five, um, members on the department. We are currently down to fifteen air packs. We continue to test and maintain the air packs every year, which we started three years ago when I became Fire Chief. Um, but the last pack that we sent out for repair came back as unable to be repaired because of its age and because they couldn't get parts for it. In addition to testing the packs, we test the air bottles, we hydrotest them every five years. They're required to be tested every five years, and they do not be tested once they are fifteen years old or older. So our bottles were last hydrotested in two thousand and seventeen, so the next time that we try to hydrotest them, they're gonna drill the hole in and send them all back to us. The one thing I do want to tell you about is the fact that, um, the Assistance to Firefighter Act grant came out, it just opened yesterday, and we are applying for that grant, and because our packs are three standards out, I can't tell you for sure that we will get that money, but I'm hoping that we will get that money. So we're basically working on applying for that. If it's awarded, the town will get all of the money that we spent on the packs back, with the exception of the five percent matching grant, which, or matching amount, which is required under the grant. So we're asking for the packs in advance, we're hoping to get the AFG grant, and then we'll go from there, so I appreciate your support.
Any further discussion on the article as amended?
Let the record be quiet, it's a three to zero, and the Voice Selectmen in favor.
All right. The Board of Selectmen support the amended article, three to zero. Advisory Committee? Three to zero. Article ten, regional health services. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of nine thousand five hundred and fifty dollars for the purpose of funding the following regional health services that assist New Whipswich residents. Milford Regional Counseling, five hundred dollars. Bed Adonik Center for Vials Prevention, two hundred and fifty dollars. Meals on Wheels, fifteen hundred dollars. Court-appointed special advocates for children, also known as CASA, two hundred and fifty dollars. Hundred Night Shelter, five hundred dollars. Well? No luck, okay. Uh, St. Vincent's Paul, three thousand dollars. The River Center, five hundred dollars. Grand Estate Children's Alliance, two hundred and fifty dollars. Doing good. Kentucky Valley Transportation Company, five hundred dollars. Bed Addon Family Services, five hundred dollars. Home Healthcare Hospice and Community Services, fifteen hundred dollars. American Red Cross, three hundred dollars. Is there any discussion on this article? Article eleven, distribution of two-hundred-and-fiftieth Celebration Expendable Trust. See if the town will vote to dissolve the two-hundred-and-fiftieth Celebration Expendable Trust and transfer the remaining balance into the general fund. Any discussion on this article?
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator, we didn't vote on Article ten.
I'm sorry. But, uh, Selectmen? All in favor, three to zero? Three to zero for Budget Committee as well. Carol?
So I want to speak to Article eleven, Carol Romerall, I'm one of the trustees of the trust funds. Uh, the town celebrated its two-hundred-and-fiftieth in the year two thousand, which is hard to believe, it was twenty years ago. Funds were raised for the celebrations we had for the two-hundred-and-fiftieth, and they weren't all spent, there was a small balance left over, which currently sits in a trust fund that we can't do anything with, because the purpose is, is over, but we're not permitted to withdraw it unless the people who put the money in there vote to do that. So I would just encourage you to vote yes to this, encourage everybody else to vote yes, so that we can close out that account and return people's money to you, which is about seven thousand dollars.
Any further discussion on this article? All right, move to Article twelve. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of four thousand six hundred and forty dollars to participate in the City of Keene's Household Hazardous Waste Program? Is there any discussion on this article? Selectmen recommend this, three to zero? Advisory?
Two to one.
Two to one. Any discussion? Article thirteen, which is by petition, is that correct? Shall the town vote to increase the amount of previously adopted optional tax credit for total service-connected disability from the present two thousand dollars to four thousand dollars, as authorized by RSA seventy-two, section thirty-five? Is there any discussion on this article? Please come to the microphone, Roger.
Roger, sound off now. I was wondering what total means? Like, what does total mean?
What is?
The one hundred percent disabled?
No.
Service connected, service connected.
So can you provide more clarification using the microphone, or?
I believe it means it comes off their total tax bill, not just a portion of it.
Uh, I think it means totally disabled.
I think, yeah, you know, it's some percent is disabled, but total, I don't know what that means, uh, total.
That means a veteran total one hundred percent disability. That's what that is.
Unless he's in bed or, or can't move, or, you know, I don't know. The other question I had is how many people, how many people in town will this affect? Approximately?
Eighteen.
All right, so eighteen people required. Uh, Mr. Coffey?
Okay, I, I'm on the Board of Assessments, and, uh, it's about eighteen people who right now get two thousand. And this would affect the total, and that would be, this, and the way this works is when the tax rate is being set, this is added back in, and it's for total disabled, this is just veterans, uh, if you're fifty percent disabled, you don't get, you gotta be declared by the VA, totally disabled. And this is vast enough in other towns, uh, and there's a slight scale, you know, that one can have, but, uh, the article is for the full amount allowed by the state. And these are, again, totally disabled veterans, as defined by the VA, not totally disability as you'd have with some superior, it's a whole different thing.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion on this article? Do we need a recommendation on this? Petition article, no recommendation. Article fourteen. By petition, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two million five hundred thousand dollars and no cents for the purpose of purchasing, financing, the design and construction of a new police station, with supporting infrastructure on town-owned land, map eleven, lot sixteen, and equipping saying, which building will house the town's police department, and to authorize the creation of a capital reserve fund through taxes for two million dollars and no cents over a period of not more than four years, and to use an additional three hundred thousand dollars and no cents from the fund balance, and to use two hundred thousand dollars and no cents from the fund balance for overages, change orders, and contingencies, under and in compliance with Municipal Finance Act, RSA thirty-three, section one, and sequitur, as amended, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to, one, apply for, obtain, and accept federal, state, and other aid, if any, which may be available for said project, and to comply with all laws applicable to said project; two, appropriate and collect funds as necessary; three, take any action or pass any other vote relative thereto; four, all expenditures of these funds shall be done by unanimous... relative thereto; 4) all expenditures of these funds shall be done by unanimous vote of the three selectmen. This article requires a 50% majority to pass. This article shall be now void if a bond article authorizing funds for the proposed police station passes. Is there discussion on this article?
Did you tell me what it said?
Mr. Coffey?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the article. Can I read it?
Yes, please.
Uh, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1 for the purpose of purchasing, financing, the design and construction of a new police station with supporting infrastructure on town-owned land, map 11, lot 16, and equipping the same building which will house the town's police department, and to create and to authorize the creation of a capital reserve fund through taxes, period." And that's the end of the article, and rest is struck out. And if anybody has any questions, like the selectmen, they can apply for grants anytime they want, they don't need a, uh...
Is there a second to your motion?
Yes, I'll overhand you a second.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator, can a petition be modified from the floor during the legislative session, citizen's petition?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can anyone change something?
Is there discussion on the amendment?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. For the record, my name is Bert Hamel, I'm a selectman. I actually was the person who wrote this petition, and the basis of the petition was I've been involved in trying to get a police station for the town since 2015. The two previous articles failed miserably. The one in 2017 got 32% of the vote, the one in 2019 received 42% of the vote. I spent several hours at the transportation trying to get signatures for this, and realized that 40% of the town opposes this thing vigorously. Okay? I also sat here last summer through an information session with 50 residents out here in the audience, and while there were a number of good questions, pointed questions regarding the police station, all 50 of those people were in support. Furthermore, the Board of Selectmen sent out a questionnaire to roughly, I think it was 1,100 residents, we got somewhere over 400 in back, most of which were in support of a police station. I've come to the conclusion that we have about 40% of the populace in favor of the police station, we have 40% diametrically opposed to the police station, and 20% is undecided, leaning towards no on this. We should have started saving money for this police station 10 years ago, when building two became uninhabitable. We should have started saving money five years ago to get this police station moving in the right direction. Now, I know some of the people are concerned about taxes, that's legit, any concern, some people don't like the police, I don't know how legit that is, but we need to start saving for this thing at some point. Whether or not we can get a bond article to pass, which doesn't require just 50%, 60%, I feel that bond article will never, ever pass this town. That's why I wrote this article. This article has a very small percentage of chance of passing, but if we don't start doing something now, I think we are facing much, much larger problems down the road with our police department. If we don't support them in some manner that is visible and ensure their loyalty, why the heck should they be loyal to the town? Many of our police officers have had much better offers in other towns. I think we need to do something and do something very visible and very quickly to show the support. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the amendment?
I'm guessing we should delete the "and" part where it says "this article shall be null and void if a bond article authorizing funds, blah, blah, blah."
Well, that's the leading of the amendment already, so we're discussing the amendment.
Oh, I didn't hear that. I'm sorry.
Yes, first of all, Bert, I want to say we are saving for it already, 1.2 million so far. The second thing I'd like to say is, am I correct by the other two selectmen, or not for this?
You are correct.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the amendment?
No, I need a little clarity.
Yes, sir.
Are you saying you're not for the amendment, or you're saying the amended article you're not for?
No, I'm not for the original warrant.
The original, that's what I meant.
And the reason being is, I...
I'm sorry, we're not talking about that article yet. We're talking about the amendment.
Not in favor of that idea.
Thank you, John. Anyone else want to speak to the amendment?
Dee Daly, Erin Lane, I believe I'm speaking to her, I'm in opposition to this, primarily because if we feel we need to build a police station, which I think we do, now, what that's going to look like, this doesn't make us do that, but it does start us to save our piggy bank. If we have 1.2 million already, I'll find amending the 200, 2 million, whatever it is down. But I don't think we're going to get there all in one year. And there are other towns that have said, "We don't want to pay interest, we don't want to pay any more than we have to for a police station." And so the town of North Sutton, for four years, they said, "We're going to pay it in four years," and they put the money into a piggy bank, and then they built it. They said for four years it was painful, but it wasn't painful for 20. And so that interest and the money that they save, if you're going to spend money, save it, spend it wisely, as much as we can put in the piggy bank ahead of time. If we believe we need a police station, then this motion would help us get there. Within two to three to four years, depending on the number we put in this, we get to where it doesn't hurt so bad to make a decision that we may feel we're going to make. So that's where I'm going with it.
Okay, any further discussion on the amendment, which is to knock it down to $1? All right, let me read the motion. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1 for the purpose of purchasing, financing, the design and construction of a new police station with supporting infrastructure on town-owned land, map 11, lot 16, and equipping the same building which will house the town's police station, and to authorize the creation of a capital reserve fund through taxes for $1 and no cents." All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
All right, I'd like everybody who voted yes to stand. Further discussion? I'm sorry. Further discussion on the article?
I'd like to speak on this article, although, first of all, the amendment, as much as I would have been in favor, I think it sends the wrong message. I don't think this warrant article sends the right message monetarily. This evening, the discussion has been centered around taxes, what our dollars are. And in my mind, I use the rationale to say, would I go out and buy a house and want to pay it off in four years, and take that burden, or would I take out a mortgage, you know, a 10-year mortgage, a 15-year mortgage to pay it off? And I think that's the route the town needs to look at. If you look at what your taxes are going to increase on a $500,000 warrant article each year for four years, that is what I call painful. And I don't think that the citizens' taxpayers want that burden. Why would you put that burden on yourself? You can spread those painners out. And where the interest rates are currently, bond interest rates, the, it's in the best interest of the town residents. We do mean it, but to pay for it, which is what our responsibility is, is best to do it over time. And this warrant article doesn't give us that option.
If I might, Mr. Moderator, speaking to that, if there was a bond article, it had been proposed this year, Mr. Lash would have been absolutely correct, it would have been slightly less expensive for the town payers to make, you know, take out a bond for it. On the other hand, because the bond article did not appear on the warrant this year, if dollar for dollar, it now makes more sense to start piggy banking, or starting a savings account, which is what this does, to create enough money to eventually fund the police station. The differential is nominal, simply because of the cost of inflation, but there is a slight difference. If there had been a bond article this year, it would have been less expensive to take a bond. However, I believe that the primary consideration is getting a police station. And because I don't believe the voters, we can get a 60% vote on a bond, it becomes a moot point.
Dee Daly, I want to try to split debate, and we'll see how we do. I would like to amend Article 14 to change the amount to $1,250,000. Strike the words "map 11, lot 16," and strike all of the words after the Municipal Finance Act, RSA 33, colon, one, that's whatever that SEQ is, as amended. I think what this would do is that, let's assume we have the 1.2 million, and that we're going to have some type of a fund. This would allow us to make a choice every year between a road and a piggy bank installment for a police station. Again, I'm not saying that everybody would make that decision, but it gives us the choice to do that, and to try to do this in a logical manner that wouldn't hurt quite so bad. I also am not sure that we have a firm plan, that we have consensus behind for map 11, lot 16. This would minimize us being locked into anything, and it would also prohibit any of the spending of the money until we did decide what we were going to do with it on the warrant.
Deidre, to clarify, was your intention to spread that 1.2 million over four years, or?
Yeah.
All right. "To see if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of $1,250,000 for the purpose of purchasing, financing, the design and construction of a new police station with supporting infrastructure on town-owned land," but striking the words "map 11, lot 16. "And equipping the same building which will house the town's police department and authorize the creation of a capital reserve fund for..." Still for $2 million? "And over a period of not more than four years, and use the additional $300,000 and no cents from the fund balance, and $200,000 and no cents from the fund balances for overages, change orders, and contingencies under and in compliance with..." End of sentence.
Can I amend my amendment to just be, after the very first police station?
Is there discussion on the amendment?
Uh, yeah, I'm not really sure what Deidre's trying to accomplish here, if she could
Do you want to get that signed, or your second, or?
So my goal to do this is to say, let's start a piggy bank, let's plan it for four years. If we assume we're going to have in there what we have now, which we may or may not, we would have enough in four years to fully fund and build something. I don't want to say where yet, because I don't think we have enough consensus. So this would let us start the piggy bank, it wouldn't let us spend anything without additional motions, but it would let us actually say, this money is dedicated to this purpose, and we still need to work harder on it, but we know we've got kids going to college, and this is our college, this is our building.
Mr. Moderator.
Any other discussion, ask, or?
Um, a couple of clarifications. The fund balances there, we can't grow that indefinitely. It gets to a certain point, and we are required to spend money out of it. So it's, it's not like we can just keep adding to that for the next five years and get up to 2 million or 3 million. It's, there's a point where we have to, we are forced to take money out. So to spend, to save 1.2 million dollars over four years, and then still not have enough money to build a police station, all we've done is raise your taxes for four years. So I recommend leaving it just like it is, so it can go, you know, be voted down, hopefully.
All right, just a clarification, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of, it's not all the way adjusted. Okay, the amendment reads, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,250,000 for the purpose of purchasing, financing, the design and construction of a new police station with supporting infrastructure on town-owned land," we didn't cross out map 11.
I didn't.
"And equipping the same..." Town-owned land, "and equipping the same building which will house the police station, and to authorize the creation of a capital reserve fund through taxes for $2 million." We haven't crossed out, sort of. Over a period of not more than four years. Does the $2 million interact?
No.
All right, so I need to cross more. All right, so I think you crossed more. Any further discussion on this amendment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
I'll take that as a negative vote. Any further discussion on Article 14? Which is not amended yet.
Article 14.
All right, go ahead.
The question is directed to the selectmen. Did this selectman present this article, or any of these other articles, to the town council for any kind of recommendation as to whether or not they are a problem? Yeah, okay, which is how they are.
We deny some town council, they go to DRA.
Okay, but you have no favor from your town council on this article, that it could, in the past, be implemented in a way of recommendation? Okay, thanks.
Any further discussion, Carol?
So, if this article was to pass, how much would be raised in the first year? 500,000?
That would be, excuse me, that would actually be at the option of the selectmen. That was intentional on my part, to leave that that way, because what we're trying to do is level taxes, or ease taxes, not make any particular year a particular burden. If we had unexpected expense, we could compensate for that. So, that would be at the discretion of the board of selectmen. Obviously, the optimal way would be to, 500,000 a year, but that might not be possible, or maybe possible to add a little something to it, depending on the town space.
So it could be more than 500,000?
It could, but it would be designed, I would hope, to leave the taxes on even keel, not have a spike at any point.
So, and if it was to pass, the last sentence talks about how it would be null and void if a bond article authorizing funds passes. Now, we do not have a bond article on this warrant, but if there was to be a bond article next year, then it would override this?
That's correct, and that was absolutely intentional on my part, because right now, bond interest rates are at an all-time low. And we, if we could get a bond for the full amount, it would be advantageous, in my opinion, to build that police station as soon as possible.
So, I have one more question. So, could there be a special, I know the bond isn't on the warrant because it missed a posting deadline. Could there be a special town meeting, just to vote on a bond article for the police station?
Scott contacted the DRA, and they gave him the RSAs, and the list, everything, but it's not something we're not looking into. Basically, they would feel it wasn't an emergency, because we've been in this position for 10 years. But at the same point, Peterborough was just able to call a special meeting for a bridge, so it, it's not something that's out of the frame of thought.
Does it work? Okay.
Jay, any more questions?
Um, microphone, please.
Remove the question.
All right, all those in favor of amending debate on this article, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. All right, we'll move to Article 15. Here's the microphone there.
I apologize, I apologize. This is the only one that seems to have a recommendation by petition from the selectmen. It is an appropriation of funds. So my question is, should this have a full room in the board, as well as a room of finance advisors, given the recommendation?
So, I didn't think it did.
I believe it was, it was put on there in error. It shouldn't have a recommendation. People just asked the opinion of the board that night, and it was put on the bottom. So it won't be on the actual warrant when it goes to the ballot.
Okay, fine.
All right, shall the town vote to adopt? So, do we have an article?
We don't have.
All right, this is by petition. To see if voters of the town will vote to revise and amend the New Ipswich Noise Ordinance as follows. New Ipswich Noise Ordinance, no person, group, firm, or corporation shall between the hours of strikeout 10:00 p.m. to, in replacement, 7:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. make or cause to make any noise that will create a public nuisance, including the discharge of firearms for recreational purposes. This article requires a 50% majority vote to pass. Anybody wanna speak to this article? All right, Jay.
Jay Hopkins?
Yes.
I just feel like this has singled out a certain group of people, because the last line refers to the discharge of firearms. It does not reference mowing lawns, splitting wood, playing loud music, having a birthday party. All of these things would become null and void after 7 o'clock, should I decide my neighbors too loud and call the police. I think this article is just way out of line. I don't think there's any need for it.
I'd also like to comment, that if this passes, it'll also be in conflict with the fireworks ordinance that says that they can light fireworks till 10 o'clock at night.
Just for everyone's information, I wrote this one as well, and spent some time with the hunters out of the transfer station. They didn't like it either. But I also received like a dozen complaints about firearms being discharged after dark. And, quite honestly, this is in response to that. I realize that it's not a very popular article. I realize that people like that are passing this one to none. But I will mention that this article is also dedicated to our town report, and perhaps the sounds of silence. It's actually dedicated to the memory of Ed Decker, who passed this past year in June 2019. And I'm gonna quote from the town report, in case anybody else who reads it. "New Ipswich is a jewel, just look around you. Breathtaking scenery, lingering streams, abundant wildlife, beautiful night skies, untouched hills and mountains, the historic beauty of New England town and quiet. Stop for a moment and listen to the quiet, Ed Decker." Thank you.
I don't agree with it.
Further discussion on this article?
Deidre, I have a question for the select board. Does the existing noise ordinance apply to all noises, including firearms currently?
Yes, it does.
I see one nod yes, two nod yes, Deidre.
I can't tell you verbatim what the ordinance says, but I do know our current ordinance has exemptions. And one of the exemptions is snowblows. So those of you that have to go to work in the morning, you can't start snowblowing any earlier than 7 o'clock with this warrant article. Disagree.
But firearms is in the, is in the current ordinance. If some, for recreation, not necessarily for shooting an injured, or somebody breaking into your house or something. But I'm just gonna clarify, is there a reason the wording was there the way it was? And I wanna make sure that we understand that firearms, and guns are currently 10 p.m.
Mr. Moderator. If I might, I think Mr. Lage is mistaken, in that, yeah, you can, it does not change the hours of operation in the morning. It still sets 7:00 a.m., on the current limit, it says 7:00 a.m. It just backs off from the evening hours.
Jeff?
Yeah, selectmen handle, actually said, after dark. And during the summer, it doesn't get dark till, at times till 9:00, 9:30, depending. And, so, did you intend to just stop it at 7:00?
I've heard that comment multiple times. I was trying to pick a time certain. I would be happy to have you amend it, and I would second it, if you refer it dawn to dusk, situation where, okay, it's 5:00 a.m. Do we wanna let people make noise?
I don't think it has much chance. I wanna leave it as it is, so it fails, but.
But dawn to dusk would be fine. It was not intended to stop people shooting. There's a lot of shooters around here, I don't have any warning. But the handling of firearms after dark is not a safe practice. And I don't care how much lighting you have, there's still shadows, and chances for accidents.
Any further discussion on this article?
That's how many TVs, snowmobiles, and everything else?
Yep.
How about cars that are noisy?
Just vote it down.
I think that's getting a little unrealistic. That means you can't drive, as the current regulation reads, you can't drive from 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. I don't think that's real.
Jay?
I just, it's kinda disheartening to see that one of my selectmen would wanna limit what I enjoy doing, because you've had a complaint from maybe 10 or 12 people. I'm just tired, in general, whether it's local or nationally, of the tail wagging the dog. So, I would, again, ask Peterborough to reconsider what you're thinking, because I really believe you're offending a lot of people, just with the likes of a couple. And I'll be, I'll be firing from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. the next couple nights, if you wanna stop by.
I'm very much aware, I've offended a few folks, it's one of my major talents. But you'll, excuse me, but this was put on, I have had complaints. I did not expect it to pass, particularly after meeting all the hunters down at the transfer station. But I felt it should be brought to the attention of town, and perhaps the selectmen, if they're in the wisdom, would like to reword it after it fails on the warrant article.
Just to address the warrant, there are three members on the select board. I have never been approached, and in my conversations with Chairman Lage, he has also never been approached on the complaints. So, that is my stance on it.
Any further discussion on Article 15?
I would just like to,
Please, Mr. Lagan.
I'm sorry, Gretchen, right?
Thank you.
I would just like to provide support to you. I'm an animal owner. My horses are wild Mustangs. And I'm sorry, but automatic weapons are very, very disturbing to my animals. And they could probably break through my barn, which is my responsibility to make sure that they're maintained. But fireworks, Tannerite, automatic weapons at inappropriate times of the evening and the early morning is really a problem for me.
Note that, John, that you first complained about it.
But I would have to say, I'm sure if you have someone shooting automatic weapons, reach the police chief, because those are illegal. So, I'm sure it's not an automatic weapon.
Well, it's also illegal to be driving unsafely in a town where people are causing major vehicle noise.
Speak to the article. Any further discussion on Article 15? Article 16. Green Farm Road and Jacklin Drive Road Acceptance by Petition. To see if the town will vote to accept the roads in Phase 2 of the Green Farm Village Cluster Development, including the continuation of Green Farm Road and Jacklin Drive, a distance of 3,168 feet, or 0.6 miles, and 28 feet wide, more or less, as a public highway, authorized by RSA 674, Section 40 RSA. This article is contingent upon the completion of Articles B9B through B9D, as laid out in the subdivision regulations of the town of New Ipswich, New Hampshire, adopted March 6, 1986. And if the board of selectmen do not accept the road as a public highway by petition prior to such town voting, date is set as March 10, 2020. Is there any discussion on this article? All right, hearing none?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All right, that motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, Jay. All right, is there any other business? Thanks for attending. March 10, all those in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed?